All right, good evening. This special meeting of the Mohammed Seymour Board of Education is called to order. It is 5:30 PM on Monday, May 6th. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone to please sign in and fill out their cell phones. I'd also like to remind all visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board to read this, the visitor guidelines, which are on the table right outside the door, and completely attach public participation form having those to do. Call these.
Lamb.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Severance. Rock.
Here.
McComb.
Here.
Fannister.
Here.
McMurray.
Here. Let's stand up for our place. I pledge.
Where do we sit to the flag? The United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God. In the temple with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have had a chance to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
McComb.
Yes.
Severance. Lamb.
Yes.
Fannister.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes. Any public participation votes?
No.
Okay, so let's move into regular business. The first item of regular business is the approval of the Middletown Prairie Elementary Dean of Students contract. Is there any discussion around that?
Yes, I had the opportunity to sit through the interview process and the second round of the interviews. And we have vetted every, all of the candidates. And I am very pleased tonight to bring forth to you Caitlin Schroder as a superintendent's recommendation to be our new dean of students at Middletown Prairie Elementary. Will you approve this for a second?
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Rock paper scissors. All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Fannister.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Severance. McComb.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes. Congratulations. Mr. Murray.
Hello, this is Joe. So I just wrote a few things here about both hires tonight. So Caitlin has been teaching the Mohammed Seymour District since 2014. She has taught fourth grade and most recently done an outstanding job as the K through five instructional coach. She impressed me all year in this role with a heavy emphasis on making changes at the K two level in regards to explicit phonics instruction. She is leading building PD and implementing a program called Ufly, which is a curriculum piece that is missing from our current reading curriculum. She successfully got the entire first grade onboarded with the program where our data is showing the biggest need for improvement in the area of phonics instruction. Caitlin is currently working on training the kindergarten and second grade teachers with this program as well. She has set up opportunities for teachers to observe Ufly in action in the first grade classrooms. Caitlin's ability to connect with staff, focus on data to drive instructional decisions, has been incredibly impressive in her first year as the instructional coach. We hope to continue this momentum she has built as Caitlin will be continuing to lead in tier one reading instruction in her new role of dean of students. Caitlin is married to Bob Schroder. They have two amazing children, Leah, who's not here, and Cade, who is here. Leah is finishing up second grade and will move into Lincoln Trail next year. And her son, Cade, is two years old, and we will look forward to him roaming the hallways of MPE in the near future.
Say a few words and sing your high school fight song, which if you can't do it, it'll be very embarrassing.
Thank you. All right, let's move to item number two, approval of Middletown Prairie Elementary Assistant Principal Contract.
Yes, on the same day we interviewed the Assistant Principals. And I'm pleased to present to you tonight Tracy Beecher, who is also an internal candidate for us. Tracy did a fantastic job for us in the interview, as we knew she would because she's been a proven leader and asset to our building here for many years. So I present to you tonight with great excitement Tracy Beecher as our Assistant Principal for Middletown Prairie Elementary.
Any discussion?
I need to approve Tracy Beecher as Assistant Principal. Call again. So you can throw it out, hey.
All right, let's hear a roll call vote.
Severance. Fannister.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
McComb.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes. Congratulations.
All right. Mrs. Beecher has been in Mohammed School District since 2010. For the last three years, Tracy has been a K through 12 multilingual learner teacher. After spending 11 years in first grade classrooms, she was eager to take on the first ML teacher position in our district. This role has led to many opportunities to mold and sharpen her leadership skills while serving a student population she feels very passionate about. Tracy holds two master's degrees in two degrees. In 2016, she received her first one in Curriculum and Instruction with an emphasis on English as a second language. And then in 2020, she completed a second master's at the University of Illinois in Educational Policy Organization and Leadership. Tracy has had opportunities to lead at MPE through her role as the Building Technology Resource Person. She was instrumental in rolling out the technology purchase for our students during the pandemic and providing PD to teachers who taught remotely with her. She has had led several presentations over her time at the district. Some of those presentations include teaching ML in the MS School District, engaging and empowering learning with instructional technology inside and outside the classroom, positive behavioral support in large group settings, along with several others. Tracy is married to Kale, where they live in Bloomington, with their two and a half year old son, August. Mrs. Beecher.
Yeah. All right, you guys do not have to stay. This is your time to leave. I mean, you're allowed to stay, no biggie. We're gonna have some really interesting legislative updates. Okay, we are on to new business item number three, appointment of President Pro Tempore and Secretary Pro Tempore. If the board agrees, Dr. Kenny Lee will serve as President Pro Tempore and Jody McDuffie will serve as Secretary Pro Tempore. Okay. It just says roll call vote. Do I need an actual motion on that?
According to, I think, Leah. Okay. No, I did not know.
So we're gonna, we're gonna appoint it now?
No.
Just appoint him, so I don't need a roll call vote. Okay. So Dr., if, if the board agrees, Dr. Kenny Lee will serve, Kenny Lee will serve as President Pro Tempore and Jody McDuffie will serve as Secretary Pro Tempore. That is until we have officers selected. Any disagreements? Are you ready to appoint? We just have a conversation about. We'll move the plug on into our conversation. It can be president. All right, and as much as there's no further business to come before the board, a motion for a German Sign A D A is needed.
Sign A D A.
Sign A D A. Sign A D A.
They're pronounced last week.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn Sign A D A. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jordan. I was waiting for it. Roll call vote on this one.
Jordan.
Yes.
McComb.
Yes.
Fannister.
Yes.
Severance. Rock.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
Okay, the meeting of the Mohammed Seymour Community and School District Number Three Board of Education meeting will come to order. First item is election of president. Nominations are now in order for the office of president. Any member of the board may nominate any other member, and nominations do not require a second.
I nominate Sonny McMurray.
Sonny McMurray is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the office of president? Are there any other nominations for the office of president? There are no further nominations. Nominations for the office of president are closed. Since no other nomination was made, no vote is needed. President Pro Tem shall declare that Sonny McMurray is elected. Sonny McMurray being the only candidate nominated for the office of president. The chair hereby declares her elected by acclamation and directs the secretary to so record in the minutes.
Thank you, wishful. Nominations are now in order for the office of vice president. Any member of the board may nominate any other member. Nominations do not require a second.
I would like to nominate Jordan Rock.
Jordan Rock is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the office of vice president? Are there any other nominations for the office of vice president? All right, if there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of vice president are closed. If only one member is nominated, no vote is needed. Jordan Rock, being the only candidate nominated for the office of vice president, is the chair. The chair hereby declares hand elected by acclamation and directs the secretary to so record in the minutes. Congratulations, Jordan.
Thank you very much. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Nominations are now in order for the office of secretary. Any member of the board may nominate another member, and nominations do not require a second.
I nominate Kyle Jordan.
Accepting it? You can say no, thank you. Kyle Jordan is nominated. Are there any other? Kyle Jordan is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, so. Somebody else wants to step up. I will do it, but if somebody else wants to do it, please.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the office of secretary? I would nominate Justin Lamb. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Can I remove my, my name? Is that okay?
I don't know.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Okay, if there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of secretary are closed. Justin Lamb, being the only candidate who accepted the nomination for the office of secretary, the chair hereby declares him elected by acclamation and directs the secretary to so record in the minutes. Congratulations. And we're gonna move on to the exception of date and location of meetings. So meetings are done on a halibut 7:00 PM in the courtroom at the administrative center. Is there any supplemental attention? Yes.
Yes, the, the meeting's schedule is attached. If, we'll go ahead and approve it as we normally do with the election of officers. If during self-evaluation tonight, it lends itself to moving that around in order to offer more time to prepare or something like that, then we'll just amend the schedule.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the date and location of board's meetings as presented? That is in your packet. Second?
Second.
Second? It's been moved in. Second, and that the board approved the date and location of board's meetings as presented is writing discussion. Okay, Mr. Roll Call Vote.
Rock.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
McComb.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Fannister.
Yes.
Severance. McMurray.
Yes. Okay, now we get to the exciting part of legislation. So Dr. John Burkie is here, is the executive director of Luda, a large unit district association. He's joining us tonight, and he's missed here on the fly providing us a legislative update. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for, for, for having me. As I was telling Dr. Lee, I've been in Mohammed a number of times, but never this part of Mohammed, so I get to see, I saw it right in the center, so. And certainly never in this building before. So this is a really nice building, and it's good to be with you tonight, and you've got the right colors for your district. But I just, I didn't get the memo about the shirt. Not like this, so. Well, thank you for having me. And as, as billed, and I, of course, cleared out the room, so. We're gonna do a legislative update tonight. So first of all, I want to tell you what Luda is, so you have a little bit of understanding about us. You are actually one of our newest members, and so we really appreciate having you in Luda. You have to have, so what Luda is, it's an organization of 57 school districts, and in general, you have to have at least 3,500 students. We have a couple that are a little under that number, that may be growing, or they were in Luda and then went down a little bit, and we don't kick them out. But it's 3,500 students or more, and you have to be a K through 12 school district, or now in many cases, you know, pre-K through, through 22. So that's really what the commonality is. And actually, out of all of the districts in Illinois that are eligible, that meet that criteria, every one is a Luda member but two. So we have almost every district that's eligible. Our largest district is CPS, so Chicago Public Schools is one of our members. And I think I have a map here. Yeah. So this is a map of where all our districts are. As you can see, up in the, up in the corner, we have a lot of suburban districts, but we actually have a lot of, of, of downstate districts. And when I say downstate, I'm referring, you know, to everything outside of the collar counties. As you can see, we have a large swath of districts along the I-74 corridor. So, you know, we've got Danville, Champaign, Urbana, you guys, we have Decatur, we have Bloomington, we have Normal, Peoria, Dunlap, and so, you know, up to Galesburg. So we have a lot of central Illinois districts, and then we have a number of Metro East districts as well. And our furthest south district, which actually falls off the map, is Marion, Illinois, which is actually almost Kentucky. So they're only about an hour away from Kentucky. So that's, geographically, we're very diverse. The other thing is, we're very diverse in a lot of ways. We have, if you're familiar with what the four funding tiers are in Illinois, you know, the, the districts that have less money, the least adequacy are tier one, the wealthier districts are tier four. We have districts spread among all four tiers and kind of evenly distributed among all four tiers. So again, our commonality is our, is our, is our size. And so the way we got, the way we got founded was a group of superintendents back in the seventies said, we really need to collaborate with other large district superintendents, because there's 852 school districts in Illinois. And I am a former Luda superintendent, and I can tell you, it's a very different job than if you're in a really small district. Not hard necessarily, it's just very different. And so they each have their challenges, but it's really a good collaboration network. So we really do two main things. One is that member collaboration and professional development. We have a couple major in-person conferences every year, and we do a lot on Zoom. We really started doing a lot more of that during the pandemic, and we keep doing it. Like, for example, we have a monthly superintendent meeting on Zoom that brings all of our superintendents from across the state. It's just a roundtable where they can discuss issues. And we have a lot of other online stuff that we do as well, and then the in-person stuff. The second thing, which is what we're gonna talk about tonight, is we do a lot with state level policy and legislative advocacy, and that's the part we are going to talk about. So we're gonna start with a quiz, okay? And the first part of this presentation is gonna be kind of the Illinois Legislative 101 class, okay? I know some of this is pretty basic, but I really wanna set the stage for where politics in Illinois right now is, and I'm not attempting to make subjective comments, I'm just trying to kind of tell you what the current reality is in, in Illinois, because that really impacts what's happening to you as schools from what goes on in Springfield. So, so the first question is, are we a blue state or a red state? Anybody wanna try that, answer that? Okay, overall, we're a very blue state, but take a look at this next slide. Look, there's red everywhere. And so, so what's really interesting about Illinois is that while we vote blue overall, and it's become a lot more blue in the last 10 to 20 years, when you look at it geographically, there's an awful lot of red on this map. It's just not where the population is. And this has a lot of big implications. And one of the things I wrote on here is what is unique about the downstate blue counties, and I'll answer my own question on that one. The answer is, in a couple cases right where you are, is the university towns, okay? Champagne County and McLean County have big universities. Peoria County actually voted blue, and this is the 2020 presidential election. Peoria County voted blue barely. It barely was a, was a, was a, was a county that went for Joe Biden in 2020. And then down here, you have a couple of the Metro East counties, and other than that, it's all the suburban counties, which radically changed. They didn't used to be blue, and that has really changed in the last 10 to 20 years. And, and so we really are three different states politically, and this is really important to understand, is Chicago, the collar counties, and downstate politically are three very different places. And it's actually becoming more like two, like where Chicago and the collar counties are voting very similar, and then many of the downstate counties are voting differently. Another thing I would point out is there's been a change in voting trends since 1990. The suburban vote has become more dominant. There's more people living there now proportionally than there was back in 1990. So the suburban areas have a bigger influence over the total vote. But here's an important thing to remember. While we often think of Illinois, and it is a very blue state when you look at it overall, in 30 of the years since 1977, we have had Republican governors. So it might be for people that don't remember back too far, oh yeah, well, it's always gonna be a Democrat. That has not been our history. But it's, it's not gonna be our history going forward, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk about just, you know, as we go through this, what's changed. This just illustrates the point that I mentioned about how more of the vote coming from suburban counties versus downstate. Jim Thompson, you may remember that name. You may, you may not, I don't know if you were alive during Jim Thompson, but some of you remember Jim Thompson. He was a Republican governor for 12 years. Jim Edgar was a Republican governor for eight years in the 1990s. But again, the, the map didn't look the same. Like, the Republicans, the one, the governorship got a lot of votes in the collar counties, and some of the downstate counties were, were not as red. So that's, again, that's, that, that's, that's really, that's really changed. So before I get to the next slide, the reason, the reason I tell you all that is because while this political environment allows for there to be a number of Republicans that are sent to Springfield as representatives or senators, it does not allow for statewide Democrats to get elected, and there's not a single statewide Democrat, elected Democrat right now in a statewide position. But that's a really new thing. And the reason is, and again, I'm not trying to make a subjective comment, this is just the reality. The reason is, the Republican Party has been nominating farther to the right candidates for statewide races. They can't win because of the stuff I just told you. Now, a moderate can, and a moderates have. And so for the, the, the overall politics of the state to change, it's gonna take maybe some changes in who the parties nominate. So the Republicans are in, are actually in a super minority, though, even with senators and representatives. So the Democrats have what's called a super majority in both the House and the Senate, and they have the governorship right now with, with Governor Pritzker. That has a lot of implications for what I'm gonna talk about tonight, because there is complete one-party control, and there is not really what I would call a check and balance system at all. And so, again, depending on what your own political beliefs are, you might think that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I will tell you that there just, there just isn't a check and balance right now. And if Republicans controlled everything, I'd say the exact same thing, and there, there isn't a check and balance. And there are certainly states in the United States that are just exactly the opposite, where it is one-party control, but it's, it's, it's Republican control. But again, this is gonna be really important for the stuff that we talk about tonight. So let's, let's first, though, shift gears and look at the budget, because this is one of the biggest things that impacts you as a school district, is Illinois's budget. So as I say here, let's look at where Illinois gets its money from and where it spends it. And again, this is continuing over our 101 class. Revenue. Revenue in Illinois comes from just a couple major sources with a lot of, you know, little pieces. The biggest sources of revenue are the individual income tax. You all know that, because you have to pay that every year. That is the biggest source. The second is sales tax. And so then there's a number of other taxes. The corporate income tax is pretty big, and when you put the corporate and individual together, you've got about 60% of revenue. You, you hear about the lottery, how the lottery was gonna save Illinois' budget, and you know, it was gonna, it was actually, when originally it was passed, it was gonna save schools. Right? It's 2% of the revenue. It, it's, it's a minuscule part of the revenue. Does it help? Yes. Is it saving anything? No. So why is this so important? Well, the reason it's really important to understand this, this, this pie is both of our major income sources, the income tax and the sales tax, are really closely tied to the overall economy. And so if we have even a slowdown in the economy, there's two big things that happen. Either there's, there's a slowdown in, in income tax, or even a cut in income tax coming in, because people either don't, there aren't as many people working, or wages aren't going up a lot, or they're even going down. The other is people don't buy as much during a slowdown or even a recession. So Illinois is really susceptible to the overall economy. The last three years after COVID, after we came out of COVID, the economy's been on fire in Illinois, and, and, you know, across the country. And that's one of the reasons why we've been flushed with money for the last three years. Both the federal government gave us a lot of, a lot of money, gave schools directly money, but also the state, but also state revenue is at an all-time high. But that's not gonna last forever, and that's, and that's what I wanna, wanna, gonna talk about tonight. The, 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 the party's gonna be over soon, so. All right, let's talk about expenditures, where the money goes. So we, we get a lot of it. Education is 26%. K-12 is about 20%, so about 6% of that is higher ed. So overall, education gets a quarter of the budget. Human services get, get about 21%. And then healthcare gets almost 20%. Those are big pieces of the pie. But look at the, the one that's in green there, that's almost 20%. Pensions. And you all have heard a lot about pensions. Again, a lot of this is tied to schools, because the people that work here are in, in a pension system. This is pension debt. A lot of it is pension debt, not all of it. And it is a real, real issue. And so I'm not gonna talk a lot about pensions tonight, but there is something I'm gonna talk to you about in a little, in a little bit about it. But what's important to understand is, the courts have already decided that the pension debt that's out there is, 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 is gonna stay out there, because the people that have been guaranteed those benefits, it can't be taken away. It is gonna be really hard for the state of Illinois to do anything about that part of the pie, okay? And so the reason, again, why that's so important is, when, if we have a downturn and revenue slows down or even goes, goes down, there's not a lot of places here where the state can cut, except the blue, and that's you. And so it's just something to be really aware of as you work on, on budgeting, and I'm not. And so it's just something to be really aware of as you work on budgeting, and I'm not trying to be a doom and gloom, the sky is falling, but I do think you need to be aware that as the economy slows down, and if we have a recession, and I shouldn't even say if, when we have a recession, the economy's cyclical. There will always be recessions, and there will always be good, good periods. We will have a recession at some point. It's going to hit Illinois hard, and the last recession, which was termed the Great Recession, hit Illinois very hard. Schools went for, can't even remember this, I'm sure, we went for seven years with our funding frozen and prorated, and it wasn't EBF then, it was called the Foundation Formula. Seven years where districts got no new money. The only new money you would have gotten was from your property taxes. So that could happen again. And so it's just important to, again, to keep that in mind and not, not think of, oh, these good times are going to continue forever, because they won't. So let's talk about next year's budget, which will be FY 2025. It's not passed yet. It'll actually probably be passed in about two weeks, so it has to be passed by May 31st. And so it will get passed. The governor, however, introduced his budget back in February, and again, back to the one-party control issue, what the governor presented in February is pretty close to what the final budget's going to look like. That would not be true if we had divided government, but it will be pretty true. There will be, there will be little things that aren't the same, but it'll be pretty, it'll be pretty close. Another thing to remember, I already mentioned my second bullet point. My third one is Illinois continues to have a structural deficit. So when you look at the budget in the last couple of years, we had tons of money. Like, we didn't have to make hard decisions as a state, but that was because all this federal money was flowing in, and because of the tax revenue I talked about. There still is a structural deficit. When all that goes down, we spend more money than we take in, and that is going to require some hard choices to be made. I had a, I had a Democratic, a pretty high-level Democratic staff member last week tell me that the budget probably, when it gets, works its way through, works its way through the legislature, they're going to have a really hard time balancing it without any new revenue. And that's for next year. That is, when times are still pretty good, there, it's just becoming more challenging than it, than it was a couple of years ago. So again, is it the end of the world? No, but it's going to be tighter. You're going to get your EBF money next year. It's $350 million is what is recommended in the law for schools to get every year. It will be 350. I'm very confident it'll be 350 next year, but I can't tell you I'm confident two years from now or three years from now that it's going to be 350. So again, something to think about. And then Tier 2 pensions need to be, need to be addressed, and I think I've got it later, but I'm going to go ahead and talk about Tier 2 now. So pensions, this is the pension 101 part of this. There's two tiers. There's the good tier, and there's the bad tier, and if you're, if you're a work, if you're an employee, and if you're a Tier 2, that's the bad tier, if you're an employee. So what happened was is we have a great pension system in Illinois, and it's been ineffective, I believe, since the 1930s. And so a really, really good system. But what happened is every year since the pension started in the 19, again, I think it was 1930s, the state has never put the full money in that they needed to, to make the pension solid. So what happens is employees pay part of their money into the pension, the school district pays money into the pension, but to make it work, the state has to put in a lot of money, too. Okay? That's the way the formula was always set up. The state, year after year after year, always cut back on the money that they put in, because they want to spend it on other things. So over time, this pension debt has grown to where it's about $130 billion. It's billion to the beat, $130 billion. And that isn't anything going forward, that's past debt. So in 20, I think it was 2011, 2010 or 2011, the state, the state said, we can't do this anymore. We cannot continue to give this level of benefit anymore. So they completely changed the pension system, not for the past people, because as I said, that you can't do that. You can't diminish what people have been promised, but you can always do it for the new people. And that's what they did, was they said, they introduced what's called Tier 2, and it's a, it's a, it's a much-changed benefit. It's better than Social Security, but it mirrors Social Security in certain ways. The retirement age is 67, and Tier 1 is 55. And there's an earnings cap, which actually is a lot lower than Social Security. So those are just a couple of the, of the things about Tier 2. But there's a major, aside from the people in Tier 2 obviously don't like it, there's another problem with Tier 2. It doesn't meet what's called the federal safe harbor target for Social Security, because pensioners in Illinois are not in the Social Security system. So you don't get both, you're in one or the other. The problem is Tier 2, because of the cap does not meet what the Social Security cap is, it doesn't meet the exemption. And probably in 2025, the federal government is going to declare, that's when, that's when you're going to first get to this imbalance, they're going to declare that it doesn't meet the safe harbor target, and then all the people in Tier 2 are going to have to start paying into Social Security, and you as a school district are going to have to start paying into Social Security. The 6% on both the employee and employer, that can't happen. That would be devastating, like devastating to school districts, devastating to employees. Everybody knows this, everybody, all the legislators know this, but it still isn't fixed. I wonder why? So if everybody knows this needs to be fixed, why haven't they fixed it? Well, the reason is there's an election coming up next fall, and there is a lot of push among employee groups, unions, to not just fix safe harbor, but to do something to make Tier 2 be more lucrative. They won't make it be like Tier 1, we can't afford it. But I do think there's a real chance the retirement age will be lower from 67 to maybe 62. They don't want to vote on that before the election. And so I fully expect that during what's called veto session, which is a two-week session that happens right after, right after the election, that they will, they will vote to do, fix Tier 2. They have to fix it. So the minimum, the safe harbor issue has to be fixed, and I haven't talked to a single legislator who doesn't understand that. So there's, there's Tier 2, okay? Now, let's go, let's go up to this year in the legislative session. The legislative sessions run for two years, so every general assembly is two years long. We're in the 103rd, so we've been around for a long time as a state. The main legislative session runs from January to May. As I said, we only have a couple of weeks left in this legislative session after, actually after I'm done here tonight, I'm going to Springfield. So I'll be down there for the next three days, dealing with stuff in Springfield. Additionally, there's a two-week veto session after the fall election, I just mentioned that, and then there will be a lame duck session in early January. So that's kind of the structure of the legislative session. So most of the bills that will affect you will either be passed or not passed by the end of May, but there's always exceptions, because they can pass things during veto session, and they do pass things during veto session. You might remember, a couple of years ago, there was a COVID bill passed that paid employees if they were out on COVID, and they got their full pay, didn't have to use sick days. That was a bill that was passed during veto session, came out of nowhere. We got it on Thursday of one week, it became law on Thursday of the next week. It happened that, it happened that quickly, and that really affected school districts. So let's talk about this section, a couple of the highlights of what's going on. One of the things, Lou, that our organization did, was we filed a bill to try to do something about mandates. You know, and you probably talk about that when you do legislative updates at your board. Illinois puts a lot of mandates on school districts, and we often use the term unfunded mandate, but I'm going to tell you, a lot of the mandates aren't even a money issue. A lot of them are, what I call it, they're a time issue, either on your staff, of things your staff have to do, or students. There's a lot of curricular mandates. One of the things that we do is the school day, in most, in most school districts, the school day is the same length it was 100 years ago, six, seven hours, okay, depending on the district. That's what it was 100 years ago. Do you know how much more we do today than we did 100 years ago? And every year, the legislature puts more in the school code that has to be taught in that seven-hour school day. And so we often oppose a lot of that, not because it's not good stuff, but you can't do it well. Teachers cannot teach every single thing and keep cramming more into any of it. And so that's one of the challenges that happens. So we introduced a bill, and I actually, I will tell you, the idea for this bill came from what you do and how you operate as school boards. We asked that an impact note be filed on every bill that gets filed, and an impact note would be an analysis on what the impact of the bill is. So when legislators are sitting at a committee meeting, talking about a bill, they would have a piece of paper, or more probably on a computer, like you have, where they would read, okay, the bill's going to cost districts this, it's going to, it's going to, this is what it's going to do in the curriculum. I mean, doesn't this make sense? Do you ever vote on anything as a school board where you haven't had a full analysis from your superintendent and his staff about what it's, how it's going to impact your district? Of course you wouldn't. You know, not only do you have full analysis, you have at least 48 hours before the meeting, when the meeting's posted. By the way, we don't do OMA in Springfield, okay? Open Meetings Act is not a thing, okay? They passed that bill for you, but they don't do that in Springfield. Things can be, come out of nowhere and be voted on within an hour. Anyway, this is a really good bill. Guess what happened to our bill? Do you think it's, you think it's about to become law? Of course not. Our bill hasn't even been heard in a committee. So we, we knew it wouldn't be, because this would radically change the status quo, but we filed this to start a conversation, and we have, and we have started a conversation. Several other bills that don't go as far as ours do, but that do similar things. And so we are having a lot of conversations with legislators that the status quo cannot continue with the way we do mandates. So let me just, I'm just, I'm not even going to go through all of these, but I want to hit on a, on a few legislative bills affecting school districts, and really, this is just a selection. There's literally hundreds that have been heard so far this year, not hundreds that'll become law, but hundreds that are working through the system. The budget I talked about, pensions I talked about, there's a bill, still active bill, that would limit 403B vendors for districts. Districts have a lot of latitude if you offer 403B and who you use, et cetera. This is a bill to limit it. This bill came about because a legislator, as a former teacher, had a bad experience with a financial advisor that wasn't very good, and was concerned about, does anybody have access to our schools? So now we have a bill. There's a bill, this bill's not going anywhere right now, it's not going to pass this year. There was a bill that was going to require that you have a student board member on your board. Some, some of our boards have student board members, and I think that's great, but I think it needs to be a local decision, because, because if you're not going to use them effectively, like if it's not your culture, don't just put a student sitting here to make it look like, you know, they're a collaborative partner. It needs to be your decision. Here's the other thing the bill did. It specifically required that that student be allowed to go into closed session. So think about this, okay? You could have a high school junior, a high school senior being required to be in closed session, hearing about any security discussions you're talking about, hearing about a firing of a teacher, a disciplinary matter. So we went nuts on this bill. I mean, this was not a bill that needed to go anywhere. So luckily, it's not. We were, we and a number of other groups were able to keep this bill from going anywhere, but it doesn't mean it won't come back. There's a bill, still active right now, but I think it's getting worked out. There's a bill that would place a state limit on athletic practice times. So again, this bill came from one situation where there was a swim team that had two-a-day practices, and some of the kids felt that there was too much practice time. So it, they went to a legislator, and we get a bill that would limit practice time for everybody in every sport. Again, we think that's something HSA should deal with, and HSA is going to deal with it. Like, if there needs to be limits placed, it should be done by your member organization that deals with athletics, it should not be a state law. There was a bill that all, that's not all school employees, but that your nurse, basically, your school nurses, were going to be required to remove tics. And I say this, this bill literally has been talked about for hours in different committees this year. I've sat through tick discussions, and we talked, not only do they have to remove the tick, they have to save the tick for three days, because you have to, the parent then needs to be able to take the tick to do an analysis for, you know, the Leiblimes disease. So again, is removing a tick a bad thing? No, some, some school nurses do it, some teachers do it, but, but what do you do when a kid gets a tick? You call the parents, say, would you like us to remove the tick? We can do it. Or do you want to remove the tick? Do you want to save the tick? Again, let's not have a law requiring this to happen in all situations. Some parents may not want a school, even a school nurse removing a tick off their child. So again, we're getting, this bill's going to get, this bill's getting dealt with, too. There's, it won't be, it won't be a mandate like that. There's also a bill, this one just got heard last, last week, again, it's been heard a number of times, I've been involved in this bill. There's a, there was a bill that way it was originally written is going to mandate yoga and relaxation time in schools, and I believe the original bill called for 20 minutes a day, every day. Well, right, and so, so, so this is the thing, is we're not against relaxation. It's like, it's like any quality, good teacher gives their kids brain breaks or whatever when it's appropriate, but this was going to be in law, and exactly to your point, you're cramming more stuff into the school day, and we've already mandated recess. I mean, they did that a couple of years ago, so there's mandated recess. This bill, and this bill got changed now to where it's, it's 20 minutes a week, and it's, it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be yoga, it just has to be some type of relaxation. It doesn't have to be accounted for, and if a teacher literally says, kids, stand up, and, you know, we're going to do jumping jacks for 30 seconds, all that stuff counts. And again, any good teacher does that when their students need a break anyway. There's a bill, this is actually a really good bill, in my opinion. This bill will equalize the outplacement reimbursement for special ed, outsourced special ed programs. Right now, you get reimbursed for private placements, but not public ones. And so it really is a hindrance for a district that has a lot of kids in public placements, because you don't get the same reimbursement. This would equalize the reimbursement. I will give you the caveat, though, it doesn't increase the reimbursement. So what's going to happen is the private reimbursement will go down, the public one will come up to where it meets in the middle. So it won't, it'll be maybe good, better for some districts than others, but I think it's the right way to do the reimbursement. There's another bill, this bill's not going anywhere right now, it was going to mandate seatbelts on school buses. Again, I don't know if this is, having seatbelts on school buses is bad, there's data that's mixed on the safety of that, and it really depends on the type of crash that would happen, but there's a lot of implications with mandating it. First, there's the cost of going back and retrofitting buses, there's the cost for the cost of a new bus with seatbelts, but there's also, there's also a staff issue. Like, like with young kids, can they, do you have to have more aides on the bus to help them get in and out of the seatbelts? So it's like, those things are all things we bring up when a bill comes out, but that stuff often isn't thought about. So that's what we, we spend time in Springfield on. So, but my last, my last point, and this is the end of my formal presentation, but lots, lots more. So that's, again, really high level, but I would entertain any questions you have about any of this or something else that you have questions about related to either policy or legislation in Springfield.
The situation with the Tier 2 pension system, what that was to kick in in 2025, we're all paying Social Security, that on those, on those employees, that affects all levels. That would not just be schools, that'd be the state, state employees.
Yes, for Tier, yes, for Tier, for Tier 2, yes, yeah. Yeah, I believe it would. There's, that's like five pension systems, it's like five pension systems, and yeah, and everybody is in Tier 2. And I actually, I was at, I was at an event a week ago, speaking, where there was a teacher I talked to afterwards who said, and I was talking about Tier 2, as I am tonight, the teacher said, I was three months too late for Tier 1. He got hired three months later. And so the way it works is it literally was a, was a set date, I think it was in 2011, and if you were, literally, if you started the day Tier 2 started, you're a Tier 2 pensioner. If you worked for even one day in Tier 1 in any system, you're Tier 1 forever. So I have a, I have a friend who is in, is in Tier 2, and actually in a state job, so it's to your point, and she started in Tier 2 in her state job, but she worked as a substitute under Tier 1, and just working as a sub, she was in, she's in Tier 1 forever. And she's like, oh my gosh, that's not why I subbed, dude, I'm so thankful. I spent, and she wasn't even a regular sub, but she was so thankful that she got some, some service in.
As a, as a financial advisor, I'm going to give you my opinion, and then I'm going to ask a question. I would love to see pensions done away with. They are way too expensive as a taxpayer. You know, you look at the actuarial tables that they used, whoever negotiated that deserves an award, because for the, and it wasn't for the taxpayer. The other part of that is pensions in the private sector are dying. They They, they are a thing of the past. Um, the self, a, a defined contribution plan puts that onus on the individual, which would take a massive burden away from individuals like us as taxpayers. So I'd love to see that. Um, then make them pay into social security would be another wonderful thing. It would make us, our jobs a lot easier as taxpayers. Um, put them into the system. I don't know what the state of Illinois would do about that. I can't imagine it ever happened because it's, because it is so blue. But then beyond, under that, you've got the 403B. The 403B is part of, it's under the rule of the Department of Labor. And Department of Labor is making every person that deals with those fiduciaries. I don't know what that means for the school district, but pretty, I mean, that, that's a significant shift. I don't know, we've never dealt with that since I've been on the board. Uh, but if we are a fiduciary, then we need to be looking at our own plan and how we are addressing that. But do you have any insight onto how, uh, the state of Illinois is going to be dealing with 403Bs and are the, are the school districts going to be fiduciaries?
Uh, that I don't, sorry. I can't, I can't address that specifically, but if I could address, back to the, you know, your point about the pension, um, and, and should we or shouldn't we have it? The problem is no matter where you are on that issue, uh, the courts have ruled under our Illinois constitution that it is a, that once a benefit's guaranteed, it can't, diminished is the word that it uses. Uh, the court, after tier two happened, the courts did rule on that. And the question becomes, well, can the constitution be changed? Well, it can, in theory.
Sure.
Would that do it? I've heard the argument, and again, I don't know if this is going to be legally accurate or not, but there is a legal argument that even if the Illinois constitution was changed, it would be protected under the federal constitution. And, um, I, I don't know whether, you know, whether that would happen. It would depend on courts, but I will just tell you honestly, and it comes back to the red, the red blue thing that you, that you mentioned, that's why I gave you this background. There will be, given our political environment in Illinois, there will not be, even, even if it wasn't a constitutional issue, there's not going to be a pension reduction, um, right now. And the, you know, we have two major unions in Illinois, the IEA and the IFT, and they would never let that, uh, they would never let that happen. And so, um, they have a lot of, a lot of influence and, and, uh, power in Springfield. And so the political reality isn't going to happen. And so I don't know what happened. Here's the, here's the interesting question is what happens if we do, if, if worst case scenarios happen fiscally, as I said, they could. Everything changes then, obviously. You know, if we're having to cut funding to social services and to schools to fund the pensions, do people start to see that in a different light? Very, very possibly. But I think, uh, I think this, again, I think the state's going to have a real legal, uh, real legal challenge with, with doing anything about it. One of the things they did, which you're probably aware of, is they did initiate basically where people in the pension, um, can get a, can get a payout. And so you take what is, I believe, um, about 60% cent, about 60% of what you're, what the actuary payout would be during your lifetime, you take it as a lump sum. And because people are choosing to do that, it is considered constitutional, because you're, you're making the choice to give up the regular pension. Uh, so that's one thing. And actually, a lot of people have taken advantage of that. Um, I, I don't know whether, I'll leave it to them to decide if they made it, if they've made a smart financial decision or not. And a lot of it comes down to, quite honestly, guessing how long you're going to live. And so, uh, a lot of people have taken advantage of that. There's also an option where you can give up your COLA, which I'm sure you're aware of the COLA. There's an automatic 3% COLA, so people get 3% every year. And that has created a portion of the debt, not all of it, but part of it. And, uh, people have an option for getting a lump sum payout, not of their whole pension, but a partial payout if they agree to get a 1.5% annually, not compounded COLA. And so some people have done that, uh, as well. So the state is trying to create some options. I, and this is, okay, this is not, this is John Burke talking, so I, this is, this is nothing official, but one of the things Illinois does that most other states don't do that have an income tax is they don't tax pensions.
They don't tax social security, they don't tax retirement.
That, right. That, that I think politically could change a lot sooner than the pension being diminished as a way to get revenue from people that are, that are getting, uh, pensions and the other retirement income. And I'm, I'm, you know, I don't know exactly, but I believe most states, and it varies, some have, some, a small part of social security that doesn't get taxed, but, um, but I think we're one of the few states that have an income tax where none of it, yeah, where none of it, uh, where none of it gets, where none of it gets taxed.
The state of Illinois is taxed retirement distributions, any retirement income.
Yeah, it's not taxed by the state.
By the state.
Yes, taxed federally. Yeah, taxed federally, but not by the state. Which, you know, is a flat 5%. So that can be a significant amount of money to people. So that, that's something that, again, politically would be really hard to do, but if, 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 if things get really tight, I could see that happening before I could see a, a diminishment of the pension. But then, again, that's just me talking, I'm my best guess.
What is your estimation with the amount of people leaving the state and then corporations leaving the state? Um, locally, you saw Jimmy John leave, you saw Caterpillar leave, you see State Farm leaving. That's a lot of pressure back on the citizens. Do you expect, are they replacing that revenue or?
I, I think, uh, I, let me answer it this way, because this is kind of a politically, it's dicey in the sense of there's a lot of conflicting data out there, depending on who's trying to argue what position on it. There are people leaving the state, we know that. I mean, we've had a, we've had a, we've had a, uh, our population has, has gone down. Um, I think a big part of the question is who's leaving? And is it high, is it high income earners that are, that are paying these taxes? And in some cases it is. I mean, one of the most, uh, uh, you know, the biggest names, really wealthy people that left a couple of years ago is Ken Griffin, who, um, it comes back to what I said earlier about, about the, the one-party control. Ken Griffin was one of the huge donors to the Republican Party. He helped, he helped almost, I believe, shouldn't say single-handedly, but he funded a lot of the effort against the progressive income tax, when that was Governor Pritzker's proposal, uh, three or four years ago. He, he moved to Miami. And so he also was a big philanthropic donor in the state of Illinois. Well, he moved to Miami and a lot of his money went with, certainly his income tax money went with him, but a lot of probably his, his, uh, his donor money went with him as well. So I think that has, I think that has an impact. And I think, uh, you know, you're right. I mean, there are corporations leaving, corporations, as you know, I think there's, I think there's a couple of reasons for it. I think part of it's taxes. I think part of it is, 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 I, I, you know, I know Caterpillar really well. My, my dad worked for Caterpillar his whole life, so I, I know the company very well. And one of the reasons Cater, reasons Caterpillar moved out of Peoria was at our time recruiting executives to move to Peoria. And so they started by moving to Wheeling and did that for a few years and now they're, now they're in Texas. But some of that was driven not just by taxes, but by, it's hard to get, it's hard to get younger executives and their families to move to smaller, to smaller communities. So I think that's, that's part of the equation. So I think it's a complicated, uh, it's a complicated equation. The one thing I'll offer, which isn't specific to your question, but it concerns me and I'm, I'm pretty vocal about this, is I'm really concerned that one of our, if not our largest export out of Illinois is college freshmen. And that really concerns me. And I'm going through it right now. I've got a, I've got a junior in high school, we're college shopping right now. And, uh, I'll have to tell you about, we did, we, we did the tour, I'll have to tell you about that. Um, and, uh, she is one of these kids, she's, she wants, she's all about going out of, out of state. And, and I'm one of these parents who says, well, it's all about how much money they offer you. So, um, but, but a lot of kids are going out of state and a lot of our, you know, of our, of our best and brightest are going out of state. And my concern isn't just that they're going out for college, but that they won't come back. And, and so, and that's a, I think, a very legitimate concern. And I really, um, I really do wish in anything, you know, we can do as an organization, we do to try to help advocate for, we, we have to do things to try to keep, to keep our kids uh, in state. Of course, some kids are going to go out of state, but, uh, it's really become a much more in-folk thing to go out of state now than it was when I went to college. I, I didn't, I had maybe one or two of my friends that went out of state for college. Now, it's, uh, you know, it's huge. When I was, I was the superintendent in Huntley in the Northwest suburbs and we actually had a ton of kids that went to Alabama. So you think, why Alabama? They gave a ton of money. And white kids got free rides to go to Alabama. And so they, Alabama was actively recruiting them. Uh, you know, Mizzou, which you mentioned, has a very, they're completely upfront about, here's what you gotta do to become a resident so you don't, you can pay in-state tuition. Why do you think they're doing that? They're not doing it because they, they want to give you better tuition. They're doing it because they want you to become a resident of Missouri and stay there after you graduate. I mean, it's a very active program to try to, you know, to try to recruit, uh, college students. So.
One of the things that stands out to me, speaking of the college piece and looking out of state, when we were looking at different out-of-state options, we found nearly every out-of-state option costs less, even if we're paying full out-of-state tuition than the University of Illinois costs. And to me, as a state institution, that's a problem. University of Illinois, if, if, if it costs less for me to go to a different state to pay tuition to a different state than my own hometown land brand institution, then we have an issue there. Like, at some point, there has to be some limit on what Illinois residents are being asked to pay, has to be asked to pay to a state pension.
Yeah, I can give you a data point on that, that I, that I just actually kind of, I verified a, a couple of weeks ago with, with the, with one of the U of I's lobbyists. Uh, so I'd heard this data point and he, he said it was accurate. Um, so, so I went to U of I back in, back a long time, time ago, not, not recently like you. Um, he, so, so I told him, I said, I saw you went to U of I recently. I said, it wasn't recently, it was a lot more recently than when I was, a lot more recently. But anyway, when I went there, I'll give you a couple of data points that show the difference. So, uh, when I went there, about 40% of U of I's revenue came from the state of Illinois. You know what it is today? 11%. For all intents and purposes, U of I is not a public university.
Correct.
That's not where their money comes from. I'll give you another data point. When I was a freshman there, my tuition, so not, not room and board, but my tuition for the whole year is $1,500. My dad went there in the, in the late 1950s, you know, his tuition was per semester? $100 a semester. So even, put that into an inflation calculator, it's still gone up a lot more than inflation. And I can tell you, the reason is, while we've done very well in funding from the state uh, over, over, certainly over the last seven years, uh, they just haven't funded higher ed at the rate, uh, of these other things. And higher ed has just really fallen behind. And, you know, at, at U of I, there's a lot of international students. You know, you know the reason? Because they make money off of them. They have to have them because they don't just pay, they don't just pay out-of-state tuition, they pay out-of-country tuition.
Right.
And so it's very wealthy or, or, you know, people certainly have the means to pay coming from other countries and U of I has to have a certain percentage of those students to make, to make.
So are other states paying their higher ed institutions more money? Or they get more federal dollars from their, or more state dollars?
Yeah. I, I, I believe so. I, you know, I don't, I don't know the, the breakdown of how they do it, but clearly, I can tell you, again, I know this from what I'm going through right now with my daughter. But, uh, you know, when you go to the other, other state schools around here, and I'm talking, I'm talking their in-state tuition. We, we, we went to Madison, in-state tuition, $9,000.
Yeah.
U of I, $18,000. Uh, you know, Purdue, $9,000. And actually Indiana's frozen, their, Purdue's been, their tuition's been frozen for about seven or eight years. And so, uh, that's, you know, good for them. Same thing with, with Iowa, with, you know, Missouri, all those, all those colleges. If you're, if you're in-state there, it's significantly less than our in-state here. But I will tell you, to U of I, I believe more than some of the other state schools. So I think there is, it is less expensive if you go to one of the other, uh, one of the other state, state schools, but still expensive.
Got a question. If we can see social security and a potential economic downturn on the horizon, what can we do to get ahead of that? Protect ourselves, try to weather that storm a little better?
So it's a great question. Um, so I'm going to speak kind of from, you know, I used to do this as a superintendent and I can, and I, I was superintendent during the Great Recession. So I had to deal with the seven years of frozen, uh, dollars. I luckily only one year had to do RIFs, uh, but, but we were also a growing district, so we had some other advantages. But, but here's a couple of suggestions. And this one's going to be really hard and I don't have a good answer to this. You've really got to control employee cost. But here's why this is so hard. We can't find enough quality employees right now. It's, it's a really hard market. There's a huge teacher shortage. There's a huge shortage of, of non-certified staff too, in many places, and I'm sure you're facing it here. So you, in many cases, you have to keep paying more, not just because you think it's the right thing, but, but to attract people. So you, in, in your union, I'm sure, when they, when they bargain or asking for a, a lot more, and it's hard, given that if you can't find enough quality people, you, you've got to be competitive. You want the best teachers here. You want the best support staff here. That's what's right for kids. So it's, it's a really hard answer. How do you, how do you deal with that? But I think there are some, some contracts that are being done right now that could potentially be very hard to pay out before the end of the contracts. But I don't, I, I, I think the school boards are in a position where they have to do that right now, given the environment. But I think looking, I think looking at, at, at personnel is one and, um, you know, in most school district budgets, personnel is 75 or 80% of the, of this expenditure. So again, you got to look at where, where the money is. And yet your people are what makes your school district. So it's, you, you've got to be very careful about, about that. The other recommendation I would have is really keep a healthy fund balance. And, you know, healthy, not out of control. And there's some districts that it's out of control. But, but, but I, I think, I think it's really proved to have a very healthy fund balance, because if you have a couple of years that are very challenging and you, those are, that's when you dip into it without impacting kids. And if you can avoid doing RIFs when times do get tougher, that's going to be good for your employees and good for your students. So if you don't want to run out of, out of money. And so, you know, your community, like when you do your levy every year, you might have community members that come and sit right here and go, you have a 30% fund balance. Why are you raising my taxes? Well, it's because you may need that 30% if, if these things happen that we're talking about. Another suggestion, and I'm, I'm going to get too in the weeds here, so I'll stop, but another suggestion would be really staying on top of your operations and maintenance. Like, like I'm sure you have a schedule, uh, preventive maintenance schedule as a district where, you know, when you do roofs and parking lots and all that stuff, don't get behind, because that's so important. In fact, get ahead if you can during good years, because there might come a year where, you know, your superintendent, it's like, we can't spend $2 million this year or a million dollars on O and M like we normally do. But if you're, uh, if you're where you need to be or even ahead, you could do that for a year and not impact kids in the classroom. But if your, if your roofs are literally have, you know, have, have water coming through them and you have parking lots with huge potholes and all that, you, you may not be able to defer that even in a challenging year. So I think really, really staying ahead of that stuff will help, uh, as well. And other things, and district, I'm sure you're doing this, districts do, but things like doing everything you can to save on energy costs. And I'm sure, again, I'm sure you've done that. You have some new, where I was in a newer building, um, but there's a lot that can be done with older buildings. Um, the district I was, where I was superintendent, we did, we did a huge sol-, we have huge solar farms. And actually, the, the district is selling off a lot of that electricity during, during peak times. And so, that actually ended up being very cost-effective for the district. And again, those things by themselves, because they're not a huge part of the pie, don't,